All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the March 12th, 2019 Public Hearing of the FY '20 School Department Budget. I'd like to open the meeting. Can we have video? And we are being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. You can silence your cell phones. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll get that done now.
The Pledge of Allegiance is true to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we have the public hearing tonight on the budget, and then we'll go straight into the school committee meeting. So Mrs. Flynn, you wanna...
Okay. I'll go through the FY '20 school budget. As you know, we made the similar presentation to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen last week, so we'll go through it for the purpose of the public. So the FY '20 budget, I just want to let you know what I've given out to you. You have a copy of the slides that we're gonna look at. The cover sheet that looks like this is just a summary of our budget. The next sheet breaks it down to the various budget subcategories. One side is all salaries, one side is all expenses. This sheet with the blue and white is how it details what's increased or decreased, what makes up our increase from last year to this year. And the final, and then there's a page that also has how our tuitions are broken down because that's a big part of our increase. And you also have, we also have the capital requests as well. So we'll just get right into it. So as you know, the FY '20 budget, the principals, department heads, supervisors, all met with the superintendent and myself to go over, they formulated their requests, and we went over their needs and requests for next year. And then I put it all together for a district-wide budget. We then met with the Budget Subcommittee a few times throughout January and February to come up with the total FY '20 request. So the preliminary budget that was voted by the school committee several weeks ago is $14,716,479. It's a $509,385 increase over last year, which represents 3.585 percent. It maintains level services, and we also included two new positions, which we'll talk briefly about. So the budget components are 58 percent. The majority, as you would expect, is salaries. The next largest component is tuition at 26 percent. That's high school and out-of-district tuition. Student services, which is transportation, health services, some technology services is 8 percent. Instruction makes up 4 percent, which is supplies and services related to instruction. Facilities is 3 percent, and admin is 1 percent. And all those are all expenditures, those not salaries. So salaries make up the big chunk, and then the rest of the expenses broken down by those So the next couple of slides just say what the dollar figure of those are. Again, biggest one, salaries, then tuition, student services, instructional services, facilities, and district administration, which is school committee expenses. So to break down the salaries, and if you look at your yellow sheet, the yellow sheet, one side says FY '20 salary budget summary. So you're gonna see all the categories that make up our personnel. So total staff, we have 147.6 FTE. In the budget that we're talking about tonight, that makes up 132.4 of those. The remainder are funded by grants and funds that we're not talking about in the budget tonight. So you can see in the next couple of slides and on your yellow sheet what makes up the salary component. We break it down by district leadership and administration, instructional leadership. Classroom teachers is our biggest component. Therapists, which includes speech therapists, occupational therapists, has four salary members. Substitute teachers, we don't assign an FTE because of per diem. Paraprofessionals, there's 27 paras in the district, but six are paid for by grants and funds. Also included are guidance and adjustment counselors, a school psychologist, attendance and residency officer, medical and health services, food service, which is paid for by the Food Service Revolving Fund. And we also have some student activity stipends, school security, custodial, and maintenance. So that's what makes up the salaries. The next largest component, of course, is our tuitions to other schools. So you can see here the numbers of students that we have budgeted for next year. We have about 298 students budgeted to go to Bristol Aggie, New Bedford High School, Fairhaven High School, and school choice placements next year, totaling $36,648. The remainder of the tuition is comprised of our out-of-district tuition. These are our special education tuitions. So we're looking at a total of $844,000 for collaborative tuitions next year, $43,000 for private tuitions. We're also expecting to get $52,600 in circuit breaker revenue, and we're using $50,000 from the Special Ed Revolving Fund that we were allowed last year to balance the tuition budget. So the total out-of-district tuition is $784,419. Now that represents 16 students. And one thing that we were made aware of just before our presentation last week was there's two new move-ins that are out-of-district students. They have not been placed yet, but they are soon to be placed. And looking at the types of placements that we think that they will be in, one could be around, this is for the tuition only, about a $70,000 placement, and another about a $42,000, $43,000 placement. Now, if these students end up attending placements that we do not currently provide transportation to other students to, that could add another $40,000 to $50,000 per student. So conservatively speaking, this could add about $200,000 to $225,000 to the budget request once. But we should know within the next, I would say, few weeks or so about where these students are going. So it's important to know that those costs that I just talked about are not included in the budget request for next year because they just became known to us last week, just before our presentation, and the budget had already been voted. We made the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee aware of that, and we'll continue to discuss that with them. So that is something that we may have to reconvene the Budget Subcommittee, take another look, and revote, possibly revote, the budget before town meeting. So this was not something that we had expected. So the next one is just a chart of our out-of-district tuitions from FY '12 to FY '20. You can see they've kind of remained, you know, they went down, went up a little bit, went down, remained steady. So we're kind of like more in the lower range of where we've been, but we're climbing again. So the next component of our budget is student services. So comprised with that is our attendance and residency. These are expenditures, not salaries. So any expenditures related to attendance and residency, medical health services, like nurse's office supplies, athletic student activity fees, and food service. Student transportation is the biggest one. We have a separate, the next slide will break that down for you. So student transportation makes up $1,117,103 in this budget. Regular day, home-to-school, school-to-home on, you know, on the yellow bus is $629,663. Special education is transportation to our out-of-district placements is $439,440. And that, again, that doesn't include any additional transportation that we may have to procure for those two students that we just spoke of. McKinney-Vento Transportation, that's for students who are homeless. We have to provide by law transportation into and out of the district. And foster student transportation as well, we're predicting about $14,000 for that. The next component of our budget is instructional services. You can see there's a lot of categories that make this up. It's just under $614,000. The biggest category is our therapeutic services. So any contracted services we have for ABA therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, anything that's above and beyond what we provide in-house. Also psychological services, any instructional technology, supplies that are related to the classroom, instructional equipment, textbooks, and professional development. Facilities maintenance is the next largest component at $410,600. Supplies for custodial services make up $35,000. And then you can see the heating and utilities make up the next, the next two lines of it. And maintenance expenses, service contracts, supplies, repairs that we need to do is about So finally rounding out the budget is the district administration budget. It's the smallest component. School committee expenditures, such as any conferences and fees, the policy updates that we'll be doing, central office expenditures, such as supplies, any travel, advertising fees, audit fees, and legal fees also make up that. So that was just a quick overview of our entire budget. The next part is how to explain our $509,000 increase, which, you know, sounds like a lot. It's 3.85 percent. So we just need to take a quicker, a better look at what makes that up. Salary adjustments. So salaries are increasing by $141,246. This includes step and contractual increases for current staff, but it also includes the addition of two new positions, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and an English Language Learner Teacher. Now that's important, that position, right now we contract out with SMAC for that at a higher rate than we believe we can do in-house. So hiring our own employee, our own teacher, will save us what we think about $12,000. So we have, we've put that in as a new, as a new position because it's actually going to save us money, we believe, in the long run.
Plus additional time.
Plus additional time. Because right now we're contracting out for .8 through SMAC, and if we were to hire this teacher, it would be a 1.0. So included in our budget are all the positions that we needed, but some of them did not get included that requested, and they weren't needed. So we talked about the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Director, the English Language Learner, those are included. But what also came through from our principals and our Special Ed Director, Technology Director in our meetings were some other positions that were needed, but we just could not include them in the budget to have a budget that was feasible by the town. So these positions include an elementary classroom teacher, a reading specialist at Ford Middle School, a math coach at Ford Middle School, a library media specialist that would be shared between the two buildings, a BCBA, which is a board-certified behavior analyst for the district, and then an increase in hours for some of our technology assistants. So those unfortunately we did not include in the budget, but I'm sure in years to come that some of those, you'll see those again. The next, the next increase that we need to talk about is tuition. And then if you want to see like a quick snapshot of all these increases, that's your, the sheet with the blue and white that kind of details what all the increases are. So high school tuition. At the time that we created the budget and that we voted on the budget, we were predicting 24 more students from this past year going into next year. As you know, we had students move in over the summer. We had students change from placements that we don't pay for, such as Bishop Stang, New Bedford Voak, Old Colony, some of the school choice, which is a lower rate, Bristol Aggie. So we found that those students have transferred to Fairhaven, so that's increased our tuition. And additionally, we just were reviewing the Fairhaven High School tuition bill, our second of three installments, and we had some students enter since then, since the creation of the budget. So right now, we are looking at three more students that are at Fairhaven High than when we pulled the enrollments to create the budget in January, dated January 15th. We had some students who enrolled after that. We actually had seven new students since the first look at this, and four have left since the first look at this as well. So fortunately, it's only three students. And that's what we had put in the budget was three students additionally if they were going to change their mind from Old Colony and go to Fairhaven, or if they were coming in from a Catholic school and were going into Fairhaven High or New Bedford High. So those three students were kind of a little allowance for us, but that allowance is gone unless any other students leave. So that's one more difficulty that we've just recently became aware of. School choice is decreasing. We have three less students. We have some students that are in the 12th grade in school choice placements that we no longer will be responsible to pay for. We have out-of-district special education decrease. Now again, this was before the students that we just became aware of. We had an increase in circuit breaker revenue and using the Better Revolving Fund, which kept those tuitions, which helped to keep those tuitions down. Other than that, they were holding pretty steady. But again, when we look at, when we get the placements for these two students and we see what the impact is for next year, then we'll be able to better, you know, report to the Budget Subcommittee and state we may need to increase the budget request. Now one thing I do want to point out also in your packet is a breakdown of all the tuitions. And this highlights, you know, who's going where and what makes up the tuition request. So you can take a look at that, and certainly if you have any questions, we can, we can take a look at them. But it just breaks down what I've kind of gone through on the slides in a, in a more clear visual way. Next budget adjustment, we have an increase in student transportation of about $85,600. Most of it is in special education. We have some, those placements can vary, the special education transportation from $200 a day round trip to our most costly one right now is about $265 round trip per day. We try to pursue cost shares with other schools right now, we're sharing some rides with New Bedford Public Schools, Fairhaven Public Schools, and Marion Public Schools that have students that are going to the same placement that we have. So we'll continue to pursue that. We also have an increase in our big bus contract, just an increase from one year to the next in the rate per bus per day. And we also have an increase in McKinney-Vento and foster transportation based on the students that we feel we're going to have to transport next year. Other small budget adjustments, we increased utilities by about $11,000, and that's really just to, to acknowledge the increase in electric fees and also some water rate increases, just to get us where we're, we're actual using, our actual usage is. Increase in professional development slightly, we added some courses, course reimbursement and travel reimbursement for special education teachers and paras. That's something that was not in their budget before, but each year we found that it was needed. And we also have some increases due to contractual requirements for PD. We have a small increase in facilities, a small increase in contract services, and again, that's due to taking the ELL out of contract services and moving it over to salaries. And also a decrease in supplies. But that, we really need to pay attention to that because we have an article on town meeting for our curriculum. So if that curriculum article is not accepted by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and recommended, then we need to make sure we put that amount into, back into the budget. So that's something that we need to, to keep a watch on. So that's it for what our breakdown is for the increases and decreases. I know we went over it fairly quickly, but you can see that in your, this is the best look at how it breaks it down, and certainly we can take questions. So just in summary, the budget by cost center, and we say, we have AES, FMS, special education, district-wide, and central administration. The largest portions of the budget are the district-wide budget, and that's where we see our tuitions and our transportation. The net, and equal to that is special education. AES costs are next at 23 percent. FMS makes up 20 percent, and central administration makes up 3 percent of the budget. The next slide that you have just takes that information and assigns numbers to it so you can see what portion of this, what of the $14,716,479 is equal to the central office, elementary school, middle school, special education, and district. One thing that we wanted to mention during our presentation to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is that we, in order to get to this 3.585 budget, we needed to make some cuts from the preliminary budget. And when we had a school committee meeting a few weeks ago, these are some of the things that we had discussed. But we felt it important to bring that to the attention of the, of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen because I know that they have asked all town departments to come in with their budget at 2.5 percent. And in order to do that, we would have had to cut a lot more. You can see that on your cover sheet. But we wanted to at least try to cut where we could, where we could cut without, you know, feeling any real big difficulty. So see, these are some of the cuts that we came up with. And even when we went through these with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen last week, you know, some of them I identified as saying, you know what, I'm really a little bit nervous about. The first one, we cut three students from the Fairhaven High School tuition. We opened the bill this week, and we had three more students. So this is, this is, you know, the difficulty that we're having this year. Our high, our tuitions are really driving our budget up. Legal fees, we also cut. We had increased it a little bit because of recognizing the fact that we are in negotiations, and we may very well be in negotiations next year. So we still have, and we still have a little bit of an increase in there, but we cut back a little bit. We cut back on utilities again, you know, that's an area that I felt we needed to have more money in, but in order to come, you know, to a reasonable, feasible budget number for, for the town, we cut some off of utilities. Math supplies and materials at the middle school, we did cut in recognition of the fact that we are going to be looking for an article. So again, we need to make sure we get that article. We cut some custodial and maintenance expenses. We cut those back to level funded. We cut psychological testing back to level funded. We had put a larger increase for McKinney-Vento and foster transportation because that's so unpredictable. You never seem to have enough, but we trimmed that back a little bit. We trimmed back our substitute salaries a little bit, nursing salaries, a little bit on PD conferences and travel, and a little bit on late bus. So in order to get this budget down to the 3.585 percent, we had already cut almost $54,000. Now, on, one thing I do want to mention on this sheet here that summarizes the budget, you'll see in the blue highlighted, in order, the one under the blue highlighted, actually, if we wanted to get to 2.5 percent, we'd have to cut an additional $154,000 from this current budget to get to 2.5 percent. And I think we, I believe we mentioned at the presentation that night that with our supplies being such a small portion of our, our budget, and already at the, the minimum we can get by with, the cuts would likely have to come from where we have most of our money, which is in salaries. We can't cut tuitions any further. We can't cut transportation any further. So the next big one is, is salary. So that's important to know as well. So we also included a slide, because this has come up throughout the, throughout the course of our discussion, in how has the school department's budget increased or decreased throughout the years? So here you have the budget from FY '11 to FY '20. FY '11, it looked like it was level funded from the previous year. It went down slightly in FY '12, went up a little bit in '13, jumped up 2, 2.38 percent in '14, jumped up 3.62 percent in '15, went back down to 2.38 percent. Small increase is 0.72 percent. '18, we went up 3.18 percent. Last year, we went up just under 2.5 percent, and this year we're requesting a 3.585 percent. So pretty, you know, nothing, nothing real glaring. We had some, a few decent increases, but some decreases and some really no, no increase at all over the past couple of years. The final thing that we mentioned to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is what we're getting in our Chapter 70 aid, which is the state, the aid from the state. So of our budget, the state will fund $6.348,772. And all that we are getting from last year to this year is the minimum per pupil increase. So our Chapter 70 aid went up $25,440 from the state. So when you look at our budget request of $14,716,479, 43 percent of it is coming from the state, and we're looking for just under 57 percent from the town. So you see the town contribution and the state's contribution. The final thing that we want to mention, that we mentioned at the town that we went through is our capital requests. We've discussed these at some of our meetings. These came about through discussions with the superintendent, myself, the Director of Technology, our Facilities Director, and also our Capital Improvement Committee. One thing that we do need to do for the Finance Committee is we do need to prioritize these going forward, but our number one is the curriculum. We're looking for $50,000 to invest in curriculum for the school district. We also would like to fill our roof preventative maintenance account. The town gave us about $50,000 last year, and we've spent, that we've paid invoices for about $13,000, but I know we've had the roofers here at least once or twice that we haven't seen the invoice for. So we need to put some of that money back to make sure we have enough for any, any roof repairs that come up next, next year. Replace the FMS cafeteria wall. It's no law, it doesn't work as well as it should. It's original to the building renovation, and it is in need of replacement. We have a burglar alarm upgrade. We would like to upgrade our fire alarm system. We've had someone come out and take a look at it, and we're just waiting for them to give us their quote. One of the other things that we put on there was the server room at the, at the AES that houses a lot of our equipment. We need to put some air conditioning in that. We also need to replace a gym door in Ford Middle School for the building inspector. We have a quote on that, and that's also $8,000. It would be nice to upgrade our HVAC server. We have a quote out for that, but that's probably not as high priority as some of the other ones. We would like to get in the habit of refreshing our technology equipment every year, some of our projectors, some of our, some of our other equipment that we use that we need to, it's getting older, we need to update it in the classroom, some of our instructional technology. We also have the roof condensers at the elementary school and the middle school. We just put AES on for this year because they're in more need of being repaired. Also, we put in some money for the driveway repair to continue to, to repair our driveways. Our special education stabilization fund to fund that with another $100,000. And then we also had some AC in the central office. So we're gonna be working with the town administrator and the Finance Committee going forward on these, and we do need to, we do need to prioritize them for them, so we'll be doing that. We were requested to put, there's, there's so many on there, but we were requested to put our needs up there, and so it remains to be seen what will be able to be funded. But certainly curriculum is, is the number one that we need to make sure we fund. So that is it for our FY '20 budget. I don't know if anyone has any questions. We can certainly take them. I don't know if Dr. Bailey has anything to add.
I just want to thank you, Mrs. Flynn, for all of the work that you've done. And just to reiterate, there is absolutely no fluff in this budget. And as Mrs. Flynn pointed out, we have to possibly, we, we do need to meet with the Subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee, again, and bring back possibly a new budget number to the committee, probably for another vote, based on the new kids that are entering the district. So because that will impact not only this year, it will impact next year's budget. But we've been keeping in communication with this committee, as well as the Town Finance Committee and the Select Board, so.
They're aware of the additional students that we just became aware of, so there shouldn't be any surprises with that.
Right.
I do have one question, and I, you probably can't answer this right now, but maybe for our Budget Subcommittee meeting. The increases that we had, the numbers in 2015, 2016, 2017, can you let us know, and I, again, you probably don't have the answers right now with you, but what made that jump? Because if you look back from 2011, we have a 0 percent increase, and then is that negative .36 to .18, and then all of a sudden you see jumps. Were we adding positions? Again, I know you don't have an answer right now. I'd like to know what we did to make those up, just because maybe we can understand how this is gonna be working in the future too, so we can start preparing.
Yeah. Off the top of my head, I'd have to look back and see what, what comprised that jump.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
From '17 to '18.
You know, to know. You know, to know.
Yeah.
I think back, back in the years you were talking about, those were the years, I think, where everyone took a zero. So I think that was a big.
There was, there was some years that there was a moderate salary increase, you're right.
Zero, so that has a lot to do with that.
Okay. And then we've probably jumped up a little bit just to make things level with other districts and things like that.
Right, right. So there were some years that I believe there was some one or one and a half, 2% salary increases. So it may very well have been, you know, within that timeframe, you know, or it could be also just the way the step increases work with some of the teachers because going from steps five, six, seven, and eight, that's a big jump. And then it kind of backs off. So most of our staff now are at step 11. So really, they're just increasing by whatever the increase in the contract is. But as they were moving from steps five, six, seven, eight, and nine, those were some bigger increases and some people were seeing increases of 9%, 10% because of the step movement. So it could be part of that as well. You're welcome.
Any other questions? No? So I know that there's a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow that some of us are going to try to get to just in case they have any questions for us. Our next school committee meeting though isn't until April 9th. So I know you're going to need to probably meet with the budget subcommittee and then will we probably have to come together for a meeting before that, you think? We were thinking of, and I was going to talk to you about doing a working session dedicated again to this budget. So we would definitely need the people on the subcommittee, but then everybody would be welcome, obviously, to that meeting. But we already have it scheduled and I know people's schedules are, you know, it's hard to coordinate everyone's schedule. So I was wondering if you wanted to do that at the next workshop we had, the next working session, because it is a priority for us to get moving on this. And see about revoting in, voting in a new number at that meeting, if we have to change it with that, if possible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. If we are, in order to, to increase the budget, you would have to vote it again.
Then it would have to go to the town.
Yeah, I mean, we would just send them our new budget figure.
Right. And we would put it right on the agenda that a vote will be taken, whatever, so we can post it with the town. We can certainly do that.
Okay. And when would the, did we find out exactly when the Finance Committee would be voting on our budget and whether or not they agree with it or not?
They are, they will be entering, if we're following the same schedule as, as last year, they're going to be entering deliberations, I believe, once they hear all the budget presentations. So once they do that, that's when they'll talk about the various department budgets and then the overall town budget. So the schedule that I have is March, from March to, from now until May 13th, I believe, they'll be holding some, you know, they'll be discussing the budget. The warrant is going to go to press on April 12th, according to the schedule from the town. So I would say that they will be making their, their final recommendation before that if the, if the warrant is going to press on the 12th. But we can certainly get some more information from them as to their schedule from either them or from Mr. Noble tomorrow.
Okay.
But town meeting is Monday, May 13th. So that's when the budgets of all the town departments will be considered by the residents for, for next year.
Any other questions on the budget hearing? No? Okay. So at this point, we'll go straight into our regular school committee meeting. So can I have approval of minutes payroll and warrant? So approval of the minutes of February 14th. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? No? All right. Approval of payroll and warrants.
Motion? Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No one opposed? All right. I don't believe the individuals in for delegation are, are actually going to speak in a few minutes. So we don't have anyone else for delegation. We don't have any old business. So new business, superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey.
Okay.
So I think it's a perfect segue after discussing the budget to talk about this next item on the agenda, collaboration with Fairhaven Public Schools. And I know that we have two administrators here tonight with us, joining us from Fairhaven. I would just ask that they go up to the podium and introduce themselves. But basically, this is an informational session right now that we want to let the committee know that we've really been working together with the administrators. I know the superintendent was unable to be here tonight, but we meet monthly at least. So we're constantly working together because in light of being a small town and having tight budgets, it's nice to talk about some, you know, problems and solutions together that maybe we can coordinate. And I know that Mrs. Flynn alluded to the fact that we do some cost shares with them for transportation. So at this time, I would love to have you introduce yourselves and maybe just, I, I've talked about this with the committee before in our working sessions, but I wanted them to put a face with the name and really understand the work that we're doing. So feel free to.
I'm Tara Kohler. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Schools in Fairhaven.
And I'm Diane Sullivan, the Director of Student Services for Fairhaven.
So I'll speak sort of globally to our conversations. Professionally, I would say that Dr. Bailey and I go pretty far back actually in our time in New Bedford. So I think it's something that feels collaborative and natural already. But it's been wonderful just to sit and sort of say we're all embarking on the same challenges. We're all embarking on the same things that we need to do and we're all spending resources trying to do those things. So if there are ways that there are things that maybe we've been working on or you've been working on, why not just have a collaborative relationship and share if we can to benefit all the students? So that's really been, I think, fun and exciting from my realm is to have another partner to talk about things with. We have, for example, say, an art teacher. If you have an art teacher, they can't collaborate with anybody but themselves often. So to be able to even think about things in the future, which we're not even at that space yet, but to possibly even let them have some PD together, let them possibly, you know, send our people here or your people there and, and those kind of things. So I think just the possibility is really probably endless, but.
And, and that takes coordination. So really working on our schedule and calendar together and making sure that our PD days align so that we have those opportunities when they present themselves. We did it this past year and the plan is to do it again for next school year. And we just, we want to start slow, do it well, you know, got to go slow to go fast. Do you know what I mean? So there's lots of ideas on the table, but we're really talking about things that we can perhaps, you know, do well. And I know, Mrs. Sullivan, you probably have some thoughts on that.
So when I, I've only been in Fairhaven, this is my third year, loving it as always. Graduate of Fairhaven High School, actually, so I'm kind of coming home from my last few years.
I am not. One of the only people who is not, no.
But in, in looking at Kristen's presentation, it's very obvious that special education creates unique challenges for districts. As we say in the biz, they come, they go, right? So you planned on students and then you planned for three, seven came, four left, so three or so. It's a, a mathematical juggling game. But the district is already collaborating on our special education parent advisory committee. And I don't know if you're all aware of that, but the two towns are required to have a special education advisory. The attendance at both towns was really very, very small to the point where prior to my coming on, they requested of the state if they could combine their advisory groups. So too small could become one grander group. And so when I first came to Fairhaven and I noted that that had happened and had been endorsed by the Department of Ed, I said, wow, there's already great collaboration that's going on. So I think that the challenges of special education, ELL, the populations, the small populations of students, the challenges that, that are created by trying to provide the resources and services that they need are certainly a place for us to begin to look at for the mutual benefit of both the districts. And I think your presentation, Kristen, clearly demonstrates that this evening.
I don't know if anybody on the committee has any questions while they're present with us tonight, but I just want to say it's been great collaborating with you. Oftentimes, you know, we don't want to work in a silo either. There's just, you know, a few administrators at central office. We're a small district like you and it's just really nice to be able to brainstorm and collaborate and get our ideas going together because we know it benefits all of our children. We have many, many children who attend Fairhaven High School. So obviously, you have a vested interest in what we're doing here as well. So. Anyone have any questions? I just want to say I'm excited. I'm very excited to see, to see what ideas you all come up with.
Yeah, I think it's great. It makes a lot of sense. So thank you for taking the initiative on both sides.
And I'm sure as we move along, we will have more information. Right now, where it's just the beginning phases of putting some ideas on the table and perhaps doing a couple of things well next year. But we meet very consistently. The communication is very good. And like Mrs. Kohler said, we've worked together. I've worked with both of these ladies for many years and it's been a pleasure. So it's really a pleasure for me to work again with, with you both. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you so much. Okay. So moving on, personnel update. You have a sheet in your packet and it just reviews three new hires since the last time we met. Does anybody have any questions on that?
No.
No? Okay. The next thing I wanted to review with you is my mid-year. Last month, I reviewed it, as you know, but we had a canceled meeting or postponed meeting because of the snow day. We had a couple of people missing. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. So you have in your packet, my mid-year, it looks like this. Okay? And this is the same thing that I reviewed with you at the beginning of the year with the four goals and basically the strategies that I'm working on. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but what I will review with you is where we're at for each one at this point in the year. So the first one talks about promoting ongoing student achievement. This is a very important one. And it, and we're at the beginning stages of conducting a comprehensive review of the current pre-K to 8 curriculum. So if you look at the mid-year update, which is on the second page in that first column, we've really done a lot of work in this area, the crux of what we do in all of our meetings, the meat and potatoes of what we do, which is the teaching and the learning. So we really have worked hard with the teachers at both buildings to identify our core values and to be sure that they're really embedded in everything that we do in our classrooms. And the teachers have had a lot of input into those core values. So it's just identifying what's important to us, what we cherish for our children, and making sure that we embed that in our classrooms. Everything that we're doing, we're really trying to become one district, not two separate buildings doing our own thing. So a lot of our professional development this year has been joint. We've had administrators facilitating. We've even had some teachers facilitating some of the PD, but people have been in the same room together, which is a nice change. We have had learning walks at both buildings with the administrators from the district level as well as the building level. And we're really looking how, how do we look at teaching and learning? What does good teaching look like? We've done that work with the administrators. We've also done that work with our district improvement team so that we can get an agreed upon, what does good teaching and learning look like? And that's complex work. So it's been ongoing. The principals are constantly given feedback by me regarding the teaching and learning that I'm seeing in their school when I go through the classrooms with them. We talked about a timeline for the budget process, which we're already, you know, full into that. A curriculum inventory has been created. So we're looking right now, it's, when's the last time we had a curriculum adoption? Not for many, many years. So we're really trying to get a handle on both schools, what we have, what we're using. And I'm going to get more into that tonight in my entry plan findings. You'll hear more about that. A lot of, a lot of what's on here overlaps with everything. So I participate in the NSIP, the New Superintendent Induction Program, which consists of full-day meetings and coaching sessions each month. So my coach actually comes and meets with me once a month. We actually do learning walks. So she's a part of that as well. And then we're doing our research on programs. We've had several vendors in, especially focused on math at the middle school level and we're having our teachers pilot some math and science programs. We've had teachers attending math webinars. And, you know, I've proposed a restructuring plan and that's going to be ongoing as we develop a more comprehensive budget. And I have proposed the addition of a curriculum director and we will talk more about that with my entry findings. And I also meet monthly with the leadership team, as we talked about, from Fairhaven. I communicate with the Old Colony Superintendent as well as New Bedford because our children feed into those schools and it's very important that we have a collaborative relationship and that we make sure that our students are truly ready for that next level when they leave eighth grade to go into the high school of their choice. So it's very important that they can take the classes they want to take, that they're ready and prepared. So those are all the things that we're doing with curriculum. So it's been quite a lot. The next one, I believe, talks about my NSIP program that I participate in that. Let's see. Hope I didn't mix up these pages. So everything we do with NSIP, it's supposed to be very practical to my role here in the district. So I've done all of the things, entry plan, I meet regularly with my coach. I've attended numerous conferences and actually the school committee, some of the members have attended some conferences with me, which has been great to collaborate at that level. Attending and participating at department head meetings with the town. So it's, oops. I think this is it. Pages are not numbered, so excuse me. So I've already introduced my entry plan. I've utilized key takeaways from all the learning that I've had and really tried to incorporate that into what I do with my role in the district. And you can see I've listed all the conferences that I've attended, facilitate monthly leadership meetings, monthly district improvement team meetings with a really strong focus on teaching and learning. I've also initially met with the town administrator when I first came on, the police and fire chiefs. I'll talk more about meeting with all the stakeholder groups and that's how I've really developed my entry plan. We formed a capital improvement committee, which Mrs. Flynn spoke about earlier tonight. And that's been, again, we get a lot of input from everybody on what's important to everybody at both schools, both sites. So it's really important that, you know, I continue to collaborate with all stakeholders, but I'm really using what I'm learning through the NSIP program and I think it's well worth the investment that the school committee has put into that. The third goal is a leadership goal, to ensure the integration of social and emotional learning and teaching and learning in all aspects. Actually, you're going to hear more about that tonight when I talk about my entry plan. But we, we've taken an inventory of what we have right now in the schools and it's a lot of everything. So we're going to investigate the establishment of a wellness committee, bullying prevention committee, or an SEL committee. You'll hear more about that in a few minutes. Provide PD opportunities. We, we sent quite a few people to a behavioral health symposium in December and I am following up with the principals to make, I'd love to know, you know, what are they doing with that? It's, we don't want to do conferences one and done and forget about it. So we want to make sure that we are implementing, you know, taking those key takeaways and bringing it back, all the good stuff to our district. And I've already talked about meeting with different directors and superintendents from other districts and that includes our collaboratives. And then the last one, this has been an ongoing process to coordinate the negotiation process for all contracts. And every contract right now in the, in the district expires this year. So that's been going smoothly. We have them all scheduled out. And as far as our progress, I, I think it's going pretty well. We have a couple of people who are on that subcommittee. I think we've made decent progress on the teacher's contract and I would love to see that wrapping up within the next few meetings, I would say, so that we can get on to the next contract. Does anybody have any questions? Because I know I reviewed this already last month, but I wanted to make sure for those of you who are not here, that you just got the gist of where we're at with my goals. I wanted to be sure that you were in. I wanted to be sure that you were informed as to what I'm doing with the goals.
I did ask Dr. Bailey to bring it back to all of us, just to make sure that we all had really a chance to review it and she had a chance. She's done some amazing things and she's doing amazing stuff, and I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of it. And she was able to publicly let everyone know what she's been hard at work, working on. So anyone have any questions or? No? All right. It's great. Thank you so much.
I will say that I have a great team, you know, with Mrs. Flynn, Mr. Oliver. The central office team has been outstanding. The principals and, and everybody is just coming together, and it's very important to me to get the buy-in and the insight. From the people who do the most important work is the work with our kids. So I try not to get too far away from that, so I try to visit classrooms whenever possible. And I meet with students. And you'll be seeing more of that in our meetings as we go on. So any other questions about the mid-year update?
No.
Okay. So the next packet that I'd like to review is my entry plan findings. Which looks like this. Okay. So if you remember, a few months back, I did a quick review of my listening tour. I talked about all the different stakeholder groups that I met with last spring. I felt so fortunate to come into the district a little early, meet with eleven different stakeholder groups. We recorded the meetings. It was a lot of anecdotal information and a lot of information that I had to go through and really pull out some patterns and trends and. But specific, I asked very specific interview questions of each group, depending on who the group was. But basically, the, the three overarching questions are on page one. What are the greatest strengths of the Acushnet public schools? Number two is what is the, what are the greatest challenges preventing our students from performing at their highest possible level? And number three, what are the next steps as we collectively plan to bring about change to best serve our students? So those were really woven into the questions. And basically, all of the answers and all of what we're going to talk about with my findings, I can't say this enough. It comes from everybody, all the stakeholders in Acushnet. The early childhood educators, the elementary, the middle school teachers, the parents, the students at both levels. I met with focus groups. The custodians, the secretaries. Administrators, school committee members, business office, the SRO, paraprofessionals. So really, everybody had a chance, and if they couldn't make one of the meetings, they were always welcome to come into another meeting. So you can see there the number of participants I met with. And what I did was, I, I broke it out. The first section I'm going to talk about is strengths. So table two summarizes what each stakeholder group basically talked about in strengths. So I'm not going to read it to you, but it, it basically talks about, they work well together, co-teaching, their team, they like who they work with. The, the human and physical resources in the, in the district. They love the close-knit community. The parents and guardians love that. And the students talked about loving the hands-on learning projects. Then we got into challenges. Okay? And I want to talk about, as I looked at all of the stakeholders' information from all of the listening tours. I really had to come up with different themes. And if anything came across more than four times, to me, it was a major theme. So alignment, you know, that's vertical and horizontal alignment with the curriculum. Collaboration, communication, student support and community. And I'm going to explain each one of those in a few minutes. But I want to make sure that you understand that the reason why those are themes is because they came up at least, at least four times. In, in each group that I met with. And I actually will put some samples in of some of the quotes that people talked about. So there was this constant theme about, we don't have alignment, we don't have curriculum alignment, everyone's doing their own thing, that type of thing. So that was the first one. So that falls under challenges. Basically, the teachers feel that the curriculum and the resources lacked consistency and alignment. The stakeholders expressed concern with the lack of vertical alignment across the grade levels. Specifically, the transition from elementary to middle school. So fourth graders going into fifth grade, I heard that there were a lot of challenges with that, so we want to take a close look at that alignment. With communication, teachers express a desire to collaborate with colleagues beyond their team. They want to talk to, and that's why I think this year, when they got to attend a PD with other teachers in the buildings, it was really nice to collaborate with everybody. But they want to see more of that. And then staff really felt that communication between the teachers and the administration was inconsistent. So again, another challenge. Student support was also listed as a challenge. Staff were concerned with the lack of effective support and programming for the struggling learners. And staff and students expressed concerns about meeting the social, emotional needs of all students. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And the last one, community, was more of a strength. That really our stakeholders value that sense of community, you know, that we have a tight-knit family atmosphere. But people also, at the same time, expressed concern about maintaining that culture. You know, they talked about, in some cases, the morale. But again, a lot of people stay here because they like the environment in which they work. So I'm going to go through each of the themes and the findings. So the first one is alignment, and that had a couple of findings. So alignment, just to review it, refers to the consistency within the curriculum. Among the grade levels, between the grade levels, across the grade levels. And we had two findings that really emerged from this first theme, alignment. The first one is that the teachers feel curriculum and the resources used lack consistency and alignment. And I'm not going to read all the quotes up there, but those are just examples of some of the things that people said in the groups. I mean, I could list everything, but it was very similar comments. So here's one example. "We are all using different programs. We pull from everywhere." Grade three to four teacher said that. So you can see some of the comments, and that was in a finding, that teachers feel that our curriculum and resources lack that consistency. Finding number two is that stakeholders express concern with the lack of vertical alignment across the grade levels. Specifically, the transition from grade four to grade five, or the elementary school to the middle school. So again, that came up as a very consistent theme. You can see that many people had a lot of things to say about that theme. The next one is communication. And that really refers to the opportunity to enhance collaboration with all of our colleagues. And to be sure that information is communicated in a very clear manner, consistent, and that we're transparent with our communication. And that includes between administrators and teaching staff. So a lot of people really had a desire to see improved communication. So the first finding under, under communication is that teachers express a desire to collaborate with colleagues beyond their existing teams. And again, you can see what some people said with that. And the fourth finding, staff feel communication between teachers and administration is inconsistent. So a lot of that is, we're told things in passing, we're told things on the fly, so we want to look at how we can improve that. The next pattern or theme is student support. Which refers to meeting the academic and social, emotional needs of all students. So one of the greatest challenges is meeting the diverse array of needs academically, as well as socially and emotionally fragile students. So we talked to various stakeholder groups, students, and they all expressed a desire to have this area improved. So the first finding is staff are concerned with lack of effective support and programming for struggling learners. And you, again, you can see what some of the staff talked about. They don't feel that the current RTI or the response to intervention is working. Students are failing but passed on. We sort of talked about that. When students go on to high school, they're getting really good grades, but then they go on to high school and they don't, they're not able to go into a certain class. Because the high school doesn't feel they're ready. So that's some of the stuff they're talking about. The next finding in that section is, staff and students express concerns about meeting the social, emotional needs of all students. So again, we want to make sure that our staff feels supported in working with a diverse range of students and, you know. Whether it's handling social, emotional needs or academic. And the last theme that emerged from my entry plan findings is community. And again, that was very positive in terms of the staff and parents really feel that they value that sense of community that we have in Acushnet public schools. And it's really seen as a strength, and that's why a lot of times people say they want to be in the town of Acushnet. However, there also appears to be some concern that there is an eroding of that sense of community. So we want to make sure that we tighten it all up. So we have a finding under community. And that is, all stakeholders value a sense of community and belonging. But teachers express concern about maintaining that type of positive culture. So it's very important to people that we have a positive environment to work in. But they really like the small, you know, close-knit family atmosphere that we have here in Acushnet. So in terms of next steps, and these are all sort of aligned back to these themes. They're really not, these next steps are not mutually exclusive. They all sort of overlap, and they will impact other things. So, for example, if the challenges outlined in the first three themes, alignment, communication, and student support are met. Then it may be highly likely that morale would improve, the community would improve. So action step number one. For findings one and two on alignment. It presents the need to ensure a unified approach to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And again, this does not come from Dr. Bailey. This comes from the entire Acushnet community. So I'm proposing creating a district-level position, highly needed, entitled Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. The director would be responsible for aligning all curricula, ensuring that curricula is research-based. As well as providing or guiding the professional development that teachers would need to implement the curriculum with efficacy. In addition, the position would oversee a comprehensive assessment system that would drive the academic student interventions and programming. Thereby, meeting the challenges put forth in finding five academic student support. So you see how this overlaps. So that, again, the first action is bringing on that new position that we've talked about earlier tonight with the budget. Action step two. Consistent, transparent, and inclusive communication needs to be embedded into the school day as a system. So we've worked really hard this year to create systems, communication systems, and we still need to work at it to be sure. That people are, have protocols for meetings, norms, professionalism, sharing meeting notes. So the first step under action two is to use the district improvement team, which is already a system that is established. To audit and create a system and schedule of collaborative meeting times within grade-level teams, vertical teams, and between administration and staff. And then starting next year with the principals, hold, monitor, and support the principal and staff communication through the principal evaluation tool. And really get a system going where they can monitor that communication, so we can really tighten that up. And action step three talks about the social and emotional learning needs of our students and families. So one of the things that I am proposing is to develop a committee that would really work together. To talk about how we could best support those students. Because we know that those students with mental health needs, it's grown drastically, not, not just in Acushnet, but in other districts as well. So we want to get a team together, people who are committed to this cause, to figure out together what we can do. Because we know we're doing some things, some things we're doing well, but both buildings seem to be doing a little bit of different things. So we want to make sure that when our kids move from one building to the next, they have a very good understanding of the rules and, you know, the expectations. And that they're really prepared from one grade level to the next, and they don't have to relearn things from one grade to the next.
Paula, what is the timeline for that committee?
That would be this year. That would be this year. And then the last appendix is just the interview questions for each group. I just listed them there so you could see what every group was asked. And you'll see a lot of similarities. But it was my way of really learning about the district. You know, and it took some time to really put this together. So I always say you've got to go slow to go fast. I think we have three solid steps. That, you know, we're already in process in many ways, but this is the more formal report of my entry findings. And from all the listening tours and the work that we started here this year. And it kind of tags, tags on to what I talked about for my mid-year, so it's all related. Do you have any questions?
No. Did a good job.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, it's really very clear.
Oh, thank you.
I do have a question for parents and community, community members out there, since we're, they're going to be voting possibly on a new curriculum. Can you put in layman's terms, what is a curriculum? Is it a big giant book that you pass out first grade, second grade, third, and they all have to? That's how, as a parent who doesn't know anything about that, thought it was. And apparently, it's way more than that. So can you?
Right, so we go by the standards, the curriculum frameworks, and whether we had a curriculum or not. I, I think the most important thing that kids have are the teachers, right? But teachers should also have something, a guide, so they're not reinventing the wheel. They have programs out there. Books, if you will, consumables. What's really hard to tell in this district is everybody is doing their own thing. So your classroom might be working on this book. Your classroom, you might use this writing program, but when the kids go to the next grade level, they use something else. So when we look at our data and we look at strengths and challenges. It's really hard to determine sometimes what's working well and what isn't working well. Because we don't have a curriculum that's consistent through, from preschool all the way up to eighth grade. So that's what we have our committee working on right now, and we've had some vendors. For example, we've had vendors come in for math programs at the middle school level. And they've presented to our people. Our math teachers are in the room, our administrators are in the room. And then we're, we're talking about strengths of the program, challenges of the program. And then we're picking out some programs that we think we'd like to pilot, and that they're currently piloting some different books. You know, different problems with the kids. But what we did prior to all of this work with the district improvement team is we talked about what good teaching and learning is. And in order for us to pick a program or a curriculum, we have to know what we're looking for. So we know that kids, it's really important for kids to have that productive struggle. They've got to have that struggle so it gets into their long-term memory. So we, we did a lot of PD with that, so that people will really be informed when they're meeting with these vendors of, oh. That is going to have kids thinking critically. I like that program because it has kids collaborating together. It's got, it's got kids talking about the academic, you know, the work that they're doing. So there's all kinds of things that we're looking for. And just getting people on the same page, it took us a little bit, but we're there, at least with the math at the middle school level. We have a consultant working with us as well, Dr. Roy, who has a very strong math background. And we're also collaborating with Fairhaven on their math programs. Because we want to make sure that our students have the same opportunities that the kids in other districts have. And we want to make sure that our kids are prepared, you know, when they go to the next grade level. And if we're not using the right books, the right curriculum, because it's outdated. It's not just the teacher. It's, it's, it's very complex. It's the curriculum. It's, you know, teaching practices. It's, it's everything together that we're looking at. So that's where we're at with the curriculum.
So the fifty thousand that we're, we're possibly asking for. Would that cover the elementary school's math, the middle school's math?
Yeah.
Is that, is it everything?
It's a little amount of money, to be honest, because many of these programs have technology elements. It's a little amount of money, to be honest, because many of these programs have technology element to them, so you have to pay for licenses. The one program that we have to get, that's why it's our top priority under capital improvement, is that fifty thousand dollars under curriculum, because after this year, the middle school loses their math program. It doesn't exist anymore. So, we have to get a new math program. We're looking at pricing for all of that now. And also, science is another area in middle school that we've been focusing on, because right now, our elementary students are doing fairly well. We'd like to really take a hard look at our middle school. We feel like that's the priority at the moment, even though, you know, we ask for fifty thousand this year. We're going to go back and ask for more next year, or we have to put it in our budget, because fifty thousand dollars will not last longer than a year.
Again, putting it into the perspective of parents, it's not just one book that we're asking for. This is just one small part of it.
Correct.
There's still like a whole, there's still many other assets to this.
We are just trying to prioritize and work with the town departments, because we know they're trying to figure out the budget, and we could be asking for a ten percent increase, but we know that's not feasible. So, the way we're going about it is asking for a capital improvement under curriculum. We can use it as we need it, so there's no timeline on that, right? And the reason for that is, when it comes to curriculum, you just don't want to buy the first thing that comes along. It's, you invest a lot of money in curriculum, a lot of training. We want to be sure that we're absolutely sure what we're getting is good and right for our kids and meets their needs. So, we've really been doing our homework with the teachers, having them pilot, having the students be a part of it, watching the productive struggle in math and seeing how they're working on the standards and how they're performing with our benchmark tests. So, well, it remains to be seen right now, but we are doing it in a way that's very thoughtful, so that when we spend the money, we're going to have, we know we're going to have something for a little while.
Sorry, one more thing, just to make sure, because I know this pops up all the time with questions with parents when I speak with them. So, you had mentioned back in your plan that the teachers also had some issues with everybody being on different pages and things like that. So, this curriculum coordinator that we're looking to possibly hire, if approved, would basically just streamline everything from preschool or kindergarten to eighth grade, and also include the new curriculum that we have in the, so everybody would be aligned.
Right. So, the teaching and learning is the crux of what we do. It's the meat and potatoes of what we do every single day, and we don't have a person who is dedicated to that one major thing that we do every day. So, that's the first step. We have other positions that are needed. Under, you know, we talked about a math coach, but this is the first person that's going to bring everything together, work closely with myself, with some of the high school folks, to make sure that we're getting the research-based curriculum, we're getting the right resources into our students' hands, to be sure that our kids are ready for that next step, and it's aligned all the way through. So, they'll be working with principals, teachers. It's a very, very needed and important position.
Thank you for clarifying.
I guess I would just want to remind people that that is, the curriculum is part of an article that will be voted on at town meeting. So...
And I'd like to add to that, if, again, if that article is not approved, we have no choice but to put that money back into the budget, which will mean more cuts in staff, because we have no place else to cut. So, it's very important to us that we get that curriculum article passed, because we need it. We, the math program is ending. We don't have a science program. Our students deserve it. They deserve every opportunity that every other child in surrounding towns have. So, that's our number-one priority, and I can't stress that enough. If that does not pass, we will have to go back and put that amount of money back into our budget, and we will have to seriously look at cutting staff, which we don't want to do.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much.
As far as the curriculum, once it's purchased, is that a up-and-running program that they're going to use right away, or do they need, does staff need training?
They'll have training, but it will be job embedded, so we'll have ongoing training throughout the year through our PD days. We have several half-days, a few full-days. But that'll be a very, a priority with their PD for next year, at least the math teachers or science.
If they're going to need training and those licenses are going to expire, we're going to, we need to do that, like.
Yep, and that's why they're looking at it. They're piloting different programs right now. Actually, we have a meeting on Monday to talk about where we're at with the pilots and how it's going, and I'll be at that meeting as well. And the consultant as well. She'll be there. So, it's really a comprehensive process.
Regarding the entry plan, I think this is fantastic, and I think it's great for the public to know and for everyone who participated to know that it really didn't fall on deaf ears. Like, this was really taken into account. This was really, you know, research, really, a lot of effort was put into this. And I think it's fantastic to hear that the teachers have some of our same concerns regarding curriculum. And to answer exactly, like, we can't afford to say, oh, let's reramp all of our curriculum at this moment. So, what's important is to say, okay, we're going to do math, but then to take this position that we desperately need and say, okay, while we can only afford to buy a new math program, this other, this position is going to now be able to look at how are we delivering writing and reading and in all of these other areas, that yes, we still need to go forward and say, okay, this year was math. Maybe next year it's going to be science. But in the meantime, we can't afford for our other areas to not be getting this attention. So, to me, this position is critical. It's needed, and it's validated even by our own staff, in my opinion, that it's needed. Have they been able to see your entry plan?
The district improvement team was the first to see the PowerPoint recently, and I was still actually working on the final report. So, you are the first to see it, but the staff will see it.
Excellent. Good.
You know, I can't stress enough that, you know, students only go through third grade once, through sixth grade once. We've got to get it right, and we can't wait.
That's right. That's right.
Again, we only have three steps in this plan. You know, we could come up with twenty steps, and we know that's not realistic. We came up with three steps that we're going to work on as next steps, but keeping in mind that those themes were really developed by everybody, and it was, you know, if it came up in four or more groups, which it did, those were the themes. So, that's what we're focused on, is, you know, what people talked about.
Well, I think, I am hoping that every staff member will take a chance to really read this. And, you know, if it's, we're able to get it on the website, I'd love for the public, so that those participants can also read. What an amazing, you know, I really enjoyed reading this today. So, just thank you for your hard work with that. I think it's a great base of where we need to go. Anything else? No? That's great. All right. So, Business Managers Report, Mrs. Flynn, FY nineteen budget update.
And you talked a little bit about it in the FY nineteen budget. So, in your packet, you have the budget summary that goes through some of the budget line items, and you also have the update, the one page, and that's what we'll be going through tonight. So, every month, I've been giving this out to the committee and discussing it and predicting, you know, our major categories, salaries, tuitions, and then other areas that we have deficits in or surpluses in. So, a bit has changed since February. In February, we were looking at an anticipated surplus of about twelve thousand dollars, which is, again, what we've discussed the whole year. That's not what we typically see because of our high level of tuitions. And now, going from February to March, we've had the opportunity to receive our Fair Haven High School, our second of three tuition invoices, and our second of two tuition invoices from New Bedford High. And as you know, a bit's changed. From the first invoice from Fair Haven to the second one, a total of seven students enrolled since the October billing to the February billing. Right now, all but one have proven residency, so I'm researching that student with Fair Haven Public Schools on the student who has not proven residency. What usually happens, what we'd like to see happen, is if a student presents themselves to New Bedford High or Fair Haven High or another district as an Akushnet resident, we like to see that other high school call us up and say, hey, we've got so-and-so. Are they, you know, fully registered? So, typically, that happens, but we do have one that we just, we don't have proven residency with, so we're following up on that. But seven entered and four left since the October billing. So, you know, that's helpful. So, we only have three more students at Fair Haven High than we had since our October count. You can see that's affecting our anticipated tuition deficit even more so. We were looking at a deficit of about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Now, we're looking at a deficit of about two hundred and five thousand because of those additional Fair Haven High students, and also, we're looking at the New Bedford High School bill that I actually just got that yesterday. We have some additional students, none of whom have proven residency. So, there's three students that we're looking at, that we're questioning their residency on, and two others that we have some questions on as well. So, we're working with New Bedford High very closely on that, to follow that. So, hopefully, by the April meeting, I'll have that sorted out for you. So, you know, like Mrs. Sullivan from Fair Haven said, it's a numbers game. Some come in, some go out. We can't always predict them, but like I've said all year, the good news is, is that we are aware of it and we're on top of it. Some of the things that we see in tuitions that, you know, again, we had thirteen students change their mind and transfer into Fair Haven High from Old Colony, from Bristol-Aggy. One just recently from New Bedford-Vogue, who is a, has a parent that lives in New Bedford, was attending New Bedford-Vogue, but also has a parent that lives in Akushnet and now is attending Fair Haven High. We had students that decided from Bishop Stang to this year, they were attending Bishop Stang, and they've transferred to Fair Haven High. Couple from school choice. So, all that affects our budget, because all those other schools, we don't have to pay. And we've already, you know, we're aware that they're at those schools, so we haven't budgeted for them, of course, because it's not our responsibility. But now, they have come into one of the schools, Fair Haven in New Bedford, that we do pay for, so it's affecting us negatively. In years past, we've seen, at this time of year, we've seen more kids leave than enter. We've seen kids unfortunately drop out or move. This year, it's a real aberration with this. Fortunately, we do have some salary surpluses. We've talked about that throughout the course of the year. We had quite a few new hires that we had hired at a lower level than the positions were budgeted for when the people left them. So, we had some that's been helpful to us, but the salary savings have been cut down. From February, we were looking at a three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Now, it's down to about three hundred and thirteen thousand. And what changed? Well, what changed is we've become aware of some leaves of absences for staff members toward the end of the year. That will be still on the payroll, but then we also have to hire a long-term sub for. So, that, again, when we're making the budget in January and February, we don't always know that someone's going to be leaving for a leave of absence the following March, April, May. So, that affects our budget, and that's what's happened this year. English language learner deficit, we've talked about that. We've had some, we have several students that require extensive services, so that's increased our need to provide those services. Also, out-of-district tuitions, that's changed a little bit. We had a change, we had some services added to one of our out-of-district placements since the last budget update, so that's changed by about six thousand dollars. Now, again, I have something down here. This doesn't include our two new out-of-district placements to be placed. So, not only do they, will they affect us for our next year's budget, they're going to be attending their placements within the next days or weeks, so there will be a cost incurred. So, when we do this update in April, you're going to see a bigger deficit. So, I, we will know that hopefully within the next couple of days or weeks. Special ed transportation, we've talked about that deficit with the, we have students that are going to varied placements, and we've tried to adjust for that in next year's budget in recognition of the fact that we don't have some ride shares that we thought we may be able to have. And again, also, the McKinney-Vento and homeless transportation, we have a deficit in that, because we do have, we're sending out three different vans, because we have students coming into and out of different schools. So, unfortunately, we can't combine any students on any of those vans based on where they're headed. So, right now, we're predicting a deficit of about thirty-seven thousand. That's not good news, but what we can do, you can see on the bottom, I've identified some possible sources of funds. If we do end the year with this deficit, we can tap some of our revolving fund balances. We still have a little bit of money remaining in our full-day kindergarten revolving fund that we can certainly close out and charge some salaries off to. We have some money in the preschool revolving fund. That's a fund currently, because we accept tuitions and we pay out of it. So, if I were to take, you see, that's as of six-thirty. If I were to take a snapshot as of today, it wouldn't be as reflective, because we have tuitions coming in. We still have tuitions that we're collecting. We have salaries going out. So, but as of the end of last school year, we had just under forty thousand. And you certainly don't want to deplete that whole amount, but it is money that is available to charge some salaries to, some preschool salaries. We do have our balance in the school billing rental fund. As of December thirtieth, was just around a hundred thousand. So, if we have some utility costs or school facilities, you know, utilities, facilities, those types of costs that we need to charge off to that, we could. Again, this is, you know, these are kind of like tapping your savings account, something you don't really want to do, but we always knew that we had it there if and when the time came. Right now, we've got our special ed stabilization fund. We've got a hundred thousand in that. Keep in mind that we're using fifty of it to balance next year's budget. We hope to refill it with an article, but we do have some funds there if we need to use that for some of our special ed costs that have gone above and beyond. And we also have some, we usually generally have some surplus funds in special ed contract services. It's tough to tell what those are now, because those are kind of, those are all fee-for-service. So, we don't know right now, like, what we have outstanding for any OTs, PTs, ABA therapists in the next couple of months. But as we get closer to June, I'll have a better idea if we can tap some of those funds. And that's where I would go first before going into our revolving funds. Same thing with any unspent texts and supplies. Probably in the last, I'd say, four or five months, we've asked our principals and our other administrators to be very discretionary about purchasing, about sending down purchase orders, certainly if it's something that they need. We don't want to deny it, but we've said, please think carefully, just in case, we need to tap some of those funds toward the end of the year. So, we've been pretty conservative with that, looking, knowing what we were going to be facing. So, we may have some supply funds, or we may have some of that to purchase some of those, some of the needed, the workbooks and things like that, the consumables that we might need to replenish. So, the news is not, it's not great, but again, we have some areas that we can look to, to fund any deficits. And, you know, as you've seen over the past several years, we could come back next month, and I could say, hey, guess what? We don't, out-of-district placement moved out of town, so we don't have that. We don't have the busing for it. Or, you know, things can, things change very quickly, so the news could be better. It could be worse, but at least we have some possible sources of funds. I, we've been updating the town administrator and the town accountant with these as, every month as I give these to you, we pass them on to the town, and we've, I've already done that, and I've said, this is what we're facing. So, it, there should be no surprises to anyone as to where we're at with our budget. So, that's where we're at with this budget. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Thank you, Kristin. So, my last section is just the school lunch report. Better news with that. And you can see that, you know, as usual, the school lunch program continues to do well. We have increased sales, average, you know, sales per day. And we also get, we're also closing the month of January. I'll be completing February soon, but we close the month of January after our reimbursement with thirty-four thousand. And our year-to-date net income after reimbursement is twenty thousand. Now, we will be having to invest some of that money to upgrade our point-of-sale system, so we're looking into that at this point now, and that's going to be probably around fourteen to fifteen thousand to upgrade all of the hardware and the software to the NutraKids point-of-sale system. But that all comes out of the school lunch revolving fund, so we don't have to worry about that with the, with the local budget. And the final thing that I included is an update on our revolving fund balances as of the close of last fiscal year, as of June thirtieth, so you can see what our fund balance is. And I did put the fund balance as of June thirtieth and also the fund balance as of twelve-thirty-one. So, we have, so we have that for you there, just to take a look at. So, we have, so we have that for you there, just to take a look at for informational purposes. So, that's all I have for Mrs. Flynn.
Does anyone have any questions on any of those things, Mrs. Flynn?
No.
I will like to, I would like to add that our nutrition director is excellent, and she's a pleasure to work with. I know that recently, I requested that all of our students who are taking MCAS on any given day receive breakfast. So, we're going to do that. And again, she didn't hesitate to say, let's make it work. So, every student who takes the MCAS on a given day, they will go to the cafeteria first thing in the morning and have a breakfast before testing time. And, you know, they'll have a chat with the principal. It'll just be a nice way to start the day. But the nutrition director, again, no problem. We'll do whatever, we'll make it work, talk to the principals, and everybody made it work. So, I have to say, it's a true pleasure to work with the people in our cafeterias. And they're growing their lettuce, it's just so nice, so nice to see.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you for that update. That's great. All right, School Committee Member Reports, Little Toy Update, Mrs. Gold.
So, I'd just like to thank everyone who attended our comedy night, the PTO-sponsored comedy night on Saturday, March ninth. It was a huge success. We had about two hundred and ten people attend that, which was fantastic. The comedian was hysterical, everybody enjoyed themselves. We actually raised, with just the comedy night tickets and raffle sales, five thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. And then, with our program booklet that we had with advertising sales, that came out to twenty-six, twenty-five, for a total of approximately eighty-three hundred dollars. So, we did very well, so we're very excited with that. In addition to what we have raised since September, we had open-house donations of a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Mrs. Margaret Viera and Mrs. Casey Coelho did a casual day for both schools, which raised about eleven hundred dollars for my teachers, so thank you for that. We had a hat day at the elementary school for a hundred and forty-three dollars we raised. We had a lunch with Santa, four hundred and forty dollars. And then, of course, we had the principal's account from AES of five thousand, for a total of funds to date of fifteen thousand, one sixty-eight, approximately. So, with those fundraising events, I think we're pretty successful. We have our cookies and soup coming up, which was actually due on Monday, but I extended it until tomorrow. So, I'm hoping to have figures on those profits by Monday. So, hopefully, if years pass, is any indication, we'll be adding hopefully another fifteen to eighteen thousand, I hope. So, fingers crossed on that. So, I think we're doing pretty well.
And there was just such a nice sense of community on Saturday night. I know it's important to raise the money, but it was just so great to see everyone from the community come out to support the one cause, the playground. It was just really, really nice, nice job.
Yeah, in addition to all the parents that came out and community members, just the staff from the schools, you know, politicians, everybody just came out. It was really, it was really fun, it was a good time. It was, I just hope we can do it again. You know, we'll keep putting on these events for everybody to come out and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that being said, there is a sheet in here though, right? That gives us like a little bit of a, so with you raising as much money as, how are we doing, I think?
Okay, so our main goal is a hundred thousand dollars to raise.
Okay.
So, we're not there yet.
No, that's okay, though.
But we have already spent, and I think we've went over this in past meetings, the expenditures that we've had. So, with phase one, I believe, phase one cost us sixty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars, which is approximately twenty thousand over budget. But we got phase one completed. So, this hundred thousand that we need is just for the two structures. So, the structures would be for two- to five-year-olds and then six- to twelve-year-old structure. So, and that will be the completion of phase two, is purchasing those things. And then, phase three would be the actual putting them in the ground and all of that fun stuff.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, there's, it's very detailed. Should I go over it, all the details?
I'm just trying to, no, I just was trying to give the public an idea of, we are doing great, but we have a long way to go. And that's okay, that's okay, we're doing our best, right?
Surely.
And I appreciate all of your effort and everyone's effort. So, thank you for your hard work on this.
I don't think we'll have a toy structure this year, possibly not next year, but the following year. Very, very hopeful. So, all the support I can get from parents and community members would be greatly appreciated.
Excellent, excellent. All right, does anyone have anything else? No? All right, so, we do not need executive session. So, our next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April ninth, at five-thirty PM. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, good night.